Okay.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'm so sorry for the wait. Working out logistics here. Welcome to our Wednesday, April 30th Board of Education meeting. At this time, we turn it over to Hazel to lead us in the pledge. Thank you so much. All right. We do have some changes here. So Ms. Germano, you want to fill us in?
Yes. So our first change is seven. Item four discussion, we're going to add item C, which is the additional funds for staffing. D, we're going to move policies from number nine to seven D, which is all the policies for review and discussion. And then nine A will be the appeal regarding the student identified in confidential Schedule A.
Thank you. Okay, so that brings us to item five, student staff recognition, which we have none at this time. And so that brings us to six A. Hazel's report from the high school.
Good evening, everyone. We've recently had many exciting updates, as usual, that I'm excited to report on. For starters, during my last report, I congratulated DECA's amazing competition at their state's championship. This week, those from Ward Melville, the Ward Melville DECA club, who qualified for Nationals are in Orlando, Florida at the competition. Their work, week after week, has been clear, and I know they're all going to do so great. In more travel news, over spring break, two of the much anticipated EF tours trips set off, one through the social studies department to London, which was, and another through the art department to France and Italy. Even from an outside perspective, although I wish I could have gone, seeing pictures and hearing stories of these trips, they sounded so amazing and probably, in my opinion, some of the best field trips that Ward Melville has offered. Students got to spend days on end sightseeing, visiting landmarks and monuments, exploring the cities. I think that it's clear that these trips provide a great opportunity and balance to get to explore the new place while still learning, but not having to worry so much about a project, a grade, or like a follow-up report. I think it was a great opportunity for everyone. And moreover, recently, just recently, our music groups held their spring concerts. Aside from a showcase at the end of, at the end of this year, this is the final time their seniors will perform in a concert. Many of these students have been playing their instruments or singing since elementary school. This concert was truly an amazing and special way to end this journey. In some more senior happenings, last week's, last week, seniors were brought into assembly to learn about the dangers of acts such as drunk driving, such as drunk driving. Although this was a heavy topic and not super fun one to hear, this assembly was so important and eye-opening, especially with the spring and summer coming up. Hearing the story from a mother of a victim of drunk driving really drove this message home for everyone. I think that I'm not just speaking for myself when I say that this will not be, we will not be forgetting these important lessons anytime soon. Finally, as spring sets in, everyone knows that means AP exams. For the next couple of weeks, many students will be taking one or more AP exams. So although this may not be the most fun time of year, the warm weather is definitely helping. And for seniors, there are several events coming up just around, just right around the corner in Three Village, first being actually tomorrow. We're all excited to kickstart these events with tomorrow's decision day, as well as on May 22nd, where we're invited to wear a shirt representing our future plans, whether that be college, you know, any other future plans, military, trade. It's always such a fun day of learning something new about all your peers and looking forward to the, looking forward to the future and taking lots of pictures. This is really such a exciting time of the year at Ward Melville and for the whole district as the school year begins to slow down. I and my peers are all excited for everything to come. Thank you.
Great job. Thanks, Hazel.
And Hazel's made her decision, right Hazel?
Are we putting her on the spot?
I decided today I'm going to go to Colby College.
Oh, my gosh, Maynor, nice! That's great. Congratulations. Great school. All right, um, we may do a little switching around here. Is Mr. Blum available, or? Okay, so do you want to do your part first of security?
Sure.
Okay, so we'll start with Dr. Scanlon for security.
So by board request, we did a survey of the staff in the district, 1,400 employees. We, the results of the survey were 55% of the employees were in favor of arming, or having armed security, 45% against armed security. Of the 55% in favor of armed security, 81% wanted security armed both inside and outside of the school.
Okay, so do we have any questions or conversation about that specifically? Sort of is what it is? Okay, so in the past, there had been other conversations about where do we go with that information and did we want to go any further? So in fairness to people who have had other suggestions in the past, what is the board thinking you would like to do at this point in time in our exploration? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think in the past, we were talking about having surveys for other groups within the community. I think we can explore that and maybe get samples of surveys from the administration before we decide on if we're going to do that or not. But I know that was what was brought up previously.
Okay. Anyone have any feelings about that? Okay. It's a good idea? Do we have?
Yes.
Yes? Okay, so we would ask then the administration if you could begin some exploratory work and see how other districts have handled that and perhaps how a survey might be composed. That would be great. All right, thank you. And to bring us up to date on zero eyes, Mr. Blum?
So the great news is, zero eyes is up and running as of a few days. But we got a chance to do some calibration and test it in this building and at Mount Elementary. And I will tell you that I am absolutely impressed with the system. And I'll, if the public's listening, I will say this, bad guy beware, because Three Village is really well-protected from a visual weapon detection system. You know, of course, that is only one part of what, you know, I believe is the, the, the plan that we should go to. But now we have that working, we tested it, it's great, it's hooked to the police department. I'm not going to go into all the details of exactly what the tests were like, but I was absolutely impressed. And I'm a, I'm a tough person to be impressed with, with that type of, so I know there are other school districts now that are interested. You know, I don't like always being the, the test case, but I think you, you would be very pleased. And I know that I had shared some of the test images with Dr. Scanlon and Sue, and I think, I think you had to say they were, they were rather impressive. So we're up and running. And, you know, by the knock on wood, we never have to take action on an actual alert, but we do have that protection. And I'm very happy that you supported us with that whole project. It was a difficult project, and I know it costs money, but I think it's, it's money well spent.
Thank you, and thank you for the rigor of, of the testing. That was really, it was indeed impressive. I would agree with you. Any specific questions to the zero eyes? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, so this will bring us to our school news, and we will go in order, starting with our elementary schools. Ms. Ruffly with Arrowhead.
Hello. For Arrowhead, April's, April's character trait of the month is acceptance. They participated in Autism Awareness Acceptance Spirit Week, Autism Awareness Kickoff Assembly, fundraising, and a school-wide walk, Purple Up Day for military children. They had a math tournament on 410. The fourth graders took a trip up to Sotoka for Founder's Day. They had Earth Day activities and projects on 422. The fifth and sixth grade murals are completed by their art teacher, Jen Mulaney. They had a cultural, the multicultural evening event on 42, which I believe was their first, and it was very well-attended. They have Family Connect Night on 43. They had an assembly with Jared Campbell. They celebrated Administrative Assistance Day, had this kindergarten screening, will be participating in charity sports night this Friday, and there may, character trait is going to be teamwork.
Excellent, thank you. Minnesaki, Dr. Kerman.
Thank you. Here's the good news from Minnesaki. We celebrated Autism Acceptance Month in April. We had a kickoff assembly where all students learned about autism. Students from our ALC classes did daily announcements about famous people with autism. Had an Autism Awareness Spirit Week, held a fundraiser selling autism awareness bracelets, and had a school-wide walk in the front circle to celebrate Autism Acceptance Month. Students who have been observed demonstrating the character trait of showing acceptance were recognized by their teachers and received a certificate at the Autism Walk. On April 25th and 26th, the Minnesaki Drama Club presented the play Finding Nemo Jr. Students in grades four, five, and six participated in the play under the direction of Mrs. Hawkins, Mrs. Swift, and Mr. Wigan Camp. The performance was outstanding. Our Big Buddy, Little Buddy After School Club has been a huge success. Students in our ALC classes have the opportunity to develop relationships with some of our intermediate students who volunteer their time to do activities with their schoolmates and get to know them. Students have developed friendships and a network of support amongst their peers. Students in the second grade enjoyed a visit from the Ward Melville High School students enrolled in American Sign Language III class. The students learned sign language for some basic phrases and letters. It was a wonderful experience for the high school students and our second graders. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I will say, I went to Finding Nemo Jr., fantastic. It was great. All right, Mount, Dr. Lee.
Okay, here's from Principal Mr. Hatrik. Multi-character night took place on March 20th and was a success with many families attending and many countries and cultures represented. A performance by Irish step dancers cultivated, cultivated the night. Also in March, we celebrated reading with partners, with parents as Reading Partner, Reading Partners Week, I'm sorry. Have a candy to, to smile, yes, wrong. We also had assembly with Gerard Campbell, who entertained the students with songs about positivity and kindness. American Sign Language students from Ward Melville High School visited Mount with it, with second grades and read books they created using sign language. The Muslim Club of Ward Melville High School also visited second grade and to read stories about Ramadan and the celebration of Eid. At the beginning of April, our Mount Drama Club performed Sussiko the Musical. In school, assemblies were held for students and nighttime performances were held for families and friends. During the month of April, we educated our students about autism, raised awareness, and encouraged acceptance of individuals with autism. Autism Awareness Assemblies were held for both primary and intermediate grades. Later in the month, we hosted Autism Awareness Spirit Days.
Thank you. And I will give the update from NASA CAG. Mrs. Betts's class was featured, you might have seen on News 12, for crocheting really cute hats for Stony Brook Children's Hospital. The third grade visited the high school for Sunday at the symphony. They had their milk and cookies night and had more than 20 teachers reading books for students in pre-K to six, so that was fabulous. The fifth and sixth grade students went to Murphy and Jelena's for their musicals. The second graders also learned American Sign Language from the Ward Melville students, which they really enjoyed. Third grade learned about Ramadan from the Ward Melville students. And last weekend was the first ever NASA CAG color run. Students and families had a great time. And last but not least, their play was Beauty and the Beast the Musical. I had such a good time, and I still have the song stuck in my head. So thank you for that. It was really fun. Next will be Sotoka, followed by Jelena's, Dr. Back.
All right, Sotoka Elementary Schools has celebrated several events this spring. There was a ribbon-cutting ceremony that took place for the new indoor recess room, and there was an Autism Acceptance Week with themed activities. And Sotoka hosted District-wide Founder's Day for all fourth graders. The school also celebrated World Down Syndrome Day with a Rock Your Socks event, and the fifth and sixth grade drama club put on a fantastic performance of You're a Good Man, Charlie Brown. Finally, there was a Pi Day assembly where the teachers competed to recite as many digits of pi as possible. The principal and assistant principal also helped with this tradition by stepping into Pi teachers in the face. I believe there are pictures of this on the district Facebook page. And then Jelena's, Jelena's High School, they hosted a number of educational and school-wide events. Students celebrated Pi Day with a math challenge, and the winning eighth-grade class earned the chance to Pi the teachers in the face as a prize, yes. Eighth graders also attended From the Fires: Voices of the Holocaust, the live performance that provided students with a moving and educational portrayal of the Holocaust. This included discussion with the cast to encourage, engage more deeply with the material. The eighth-grade students at Jelena's also participated in an important lesson on hate speech, which included a focus on understanding and addressing antisemitism. The sessions were taught through English classes by Dr. Cohen, the Director of Social Studies, and Ms. Keane, the Principal. These interactive sessions explored what constitutes hate speech, why it's harmful, and the consequences individuals can face as a result. Students also learned strategies for speaking out against discrimination. Using real-world examples, students examined the impact of hateful rhetoric and discussed the responsibility we all share in fostering a respectful and inclusive community. Ninth-grade students took part in a multi-faith forum as part of their global history curriculum to learn about world religions and their impact on societies and history, including Judaism, Christianity, Islam, Hinduism, and Sikhism. There was also a visit to Stony Brook University's Institute for STEM Education to apply forensic science in a lab setting to solve crimes, which included analyzing DNA samples. Jelena's musical, Newsies, was also spectacular, featuring a passionate group of young newsboys fighting for justice on the streets of New York City. There was also support for, there was Autism Awareness Month with posters and activities, and they hosted a March Madness Free Throw showdown during lunch. There was a visit by the Jelena's Red Cross to the Long Island State Veterans Home in Stony Brook, and the Signs Olympia team earned medals in 16 out of 23 events and finished fifth in the state.
Excellent, thank you. And I saw Newsies too, and it also was great. Murphy, Mr. Vizzo.
And Jelena and Murphy did Anastasia, and it was a successful performance. Also at Murphy, they held their annual Staff vs. Students basketball game, preceded by a successful three-on-three student tournament organized by the Phys ed Department and World Languages. Thank you, Mr. Gianinotti, for hosting this. The final game showcased school spirit, friendly competition, and sportsmanship. Also in foreign languages, Madame Randon and her students brought a Taste of France to the entire building by sharing delicious crepes with all of the students and staff. Guidance Department hosted a College and Career Day. Activities included staff wearing alma mater shirts, speaking to students during lunch, the photo booth, prize wheel, paper graduation caps displayed on doors, video presentations, post-secondary options, and grade-level-specific activities like All About Me, Teacher Scavenger Hunt, Teacher Jeopardy, et cetera. In recognition of Autism Awareness Month, the school created a meaningful display board to promote understanding, acceptance, and respect within the school community.
Thank you so much. And Anastasia was also great. All right. Listen, if you invite me, I'm coming, so just know it now. All right, a couple of other updates. Thank you, Mr. Holonia. In addition to Hazel's report, Ward Melville High School junior Natanyela Kaminova and her teammates from the Art and Visual Design Program at the Gary D. Bixhorn Technical Center at Bosse's recently captured the state championship for their promotional bulletin board design at the statewide Skills USA competition held up in Syracuse. Natanyela and her teammates will compete at Nationals in Atlanta later this year, so we wish very good luck on that. The Ward Melville Academic Quiz Bowls team competed in the U.S. Department of Energy's National Science Bowl this weekend. The team placed in the top 16 out of 67 qualifying teams. This was the best showing in team history and their third straight trip to Nationals. Congratulations to junior Anna Zing, sophomores Harry Gao, Jason Yin, Gunna Sunar, and advisor Mr. Phil Medina. And Dr. Scanlon has an update from the Academy.
Certainly. So just prior to the break, the Academy did another one of its monthly field trips. It also is making preparations at this time of year for the AP exams. Several students at the, at the high school we mentioned are preparing for that. It's two weeks of just so much fun for the AP students. And then the big events at the, we're getting to the end of the year. May is going to fly by pretty quickly. They're making their preparations for their prom and their graduation ceremony, which was separate from the high school graduation. Students from the Academy do, are able to participate in both. That's all we have.
Thank you so much. And thank you, everybody, for those reports. We appreciate it. All right, so that will bring us to our added item seven C, additional funds for staff, and we'll turn it over to Dr. Scanlon.
Thank you. So at our last Board of Education meeting, the board voted four to three to remove the start time monies out of the budget for use in the addressing some of our staffing concerns. In addition, Dr. Biscari and his diligence worked with the textbook code and was able to find an additional $100,000 in there from some savings that we had. So we wound up with $1,114,000 that we are eligible to use for restoring some of our programs. So we looked first at the elementary levels, where we mentioned it the last time that we had classes at 27 or higher. We identified with the help of the principals, Dr. DeBruski led the staffing meeting last week to go through the numbers and see where we would add those. So we went through each of the schools, found seven sections that we're going to add back, which would lower all the grade level class sizes for the entire district on average. Just a caveat to this, we are still not done testing yet. So we're still screening with CSC processes, and we're still screening with ENL processes. And as is the case every year, we anticipate that this summer, we will wind up with more students coming to our doorsteps. So past three years in a row, we have had ENL staffing over the summer. So when we add additional sections back into the buildings, it increases some of our areas, special areas of staffing, excuse me. So that's art, music, health, phys ed. So we needed a point six back in that. So total, the addition right now is $760,000, and our class sizes are very, in good shape for next year. There shouldn't be any, any major concerns. Unless we deal with a major influx of students at some point, we may adjust here and there, a section from a grade level to another grade level, depending on how numbers fall with the, the testing and the CSC process. So with the additional monies remaining, about $340,000, we wanted to throw this out to the board for input about to the board for input about what some of the direction might want to be here. So one of the ideas we talked about at the last meeting was potentially looking for an alternative to just the IG program not coming back in, and we thought of, why don't we bring the STEM program back? We could start it small, begin with one grade level. We thought the fourth grade would be a good grade level to begin that. It's about $100,000 for the staffing with that. What this would currently look like, and this is in early stages of this, the STEM teacher would go to each one of our schools one day a week, so for the, to work with the grade level. So that's one possibility. That is not the model that we had just prior to COVID. Remember, we had a STEM teacher in every building, and they rotated through our schedule of all grade levels, K through six, prior to that, but we needed the five STEM teachers to help us with the COVID staffing. Another possibility which was discussed, we had several parents that spoke at the last meeting regarding restoring IG. So IG is a little bit more costly. It's about $100,000 for the teacher and about approximately another $100,000 for restoration of transportation. Because remember, it's housed at NASTA CAG, it's in one building, so the students come from the other four buildings to that building. In order to do this, we'd have to, we held on the process for fourth-grade selection. We would have to get that, we're basically now about a month and a half behind to get that back up and going and to restore that program. Another proposal that was brought to the table last meeting as well was, and what the board has also received some, some information from members of the community through email and phone calls, as have I, restoring summer reading. Remember, we, part of the cuts that we made was eliminating summer reading and summer Math IAS. The majority of the comments have not been regarding summer Math IAS, it's been about summer reading. And that, we're estimating about a $70,000 cost for restoration of that for this summer. Also behind on that, about a month and a half behind on that one, we would have to work very quickly if the board gave some consensus to us moving forward with this, so that we need to identify the students in each one of the elementary schools for those grade levels, those are the K going into one, the one going into two, and the two going into three, and then get invitations out and start formulating classes. Big part of it is we'll have to begin by finding a new summer reading coordinator, because the summer reading coordinator is retiring, so we have to find someone else to fill in that role. Another major suggestion from our part is hold some of these funds in abeyance, because, as we said, every year, somehow, some way, between the budget vote and the opening of school, we usually have some requests for additional staffing in some areas. And it's to no fault of anyone in the district, we have people that generally move during the summer. Most families don't try to move during vacation periods in the year unless something happens with someone's job or something major happens in the family. Most families generally move when there's a larger period of time to move, which is the summertime. So each year, as I said, for the past three years, ENL has increased exponentially, and this may be not, this year may not be any different than that. And there's also a possibility, depending on how the CSC processes go, if people move in and they have a child with special needs, whatever those requirements are, we are, we are required under law to, are obligated under law to give them those services, and then follow the process of doing the CSC upon arrival in the school district within 30 days. So that could be anywhere from $100,000 to $200,000. There's no way of really knowing, but you know, just knowing that last year alone, a full-time ENL teacher, that's $100,000, the year before, another full-time ENL teacher, so it's, it's increased each year. So we just, as a word of caution, like, try not to spend all the money all at once. So we laid these items out, now we open it up for board discussion.
Thank you. So I open it up to each of the trustees. Shall we start? Let's parse it apart, and is there anybody who has a differing opinion about the need to restore those seven elementary teachers? No. So do we have consensus that that is the right show of hands, that that is the correct thing to do as the number-one priority? Okay, so we're unanimous on that. So then, that money being pulled aside, that leaves you with the 340, and I open it up to discussion. Sure?
So all of these programs do seem worthwhile, too. I know the IG program and the summer reading is something we've had for a while. STEM, it's been, it's been a couple of years since we've offered that, so from my perspective, I think we should be focusing on restoring some of the programs that we cut, rather than adding something new in this year. That's not, that's not to say we're going to forget about it, but since these were programs that cut and we have the money available, I think restoring should be, should be a priority. So specifically, I want to talk about IG a little bit. I know there's, you know, there's some drawbacks in terms of there's transportation costs, we're taking the kids out of their, their home schools, there's some social cost on that as well, too, and it's a pretty small number of students. But it's, it's, you know, we're a district where all the students get their, get their needs met, right? So drama children get drama, music children get music, sports children get sports. It's not that every student participates in every single sport, right? That's okay. And so if someone's academically inclined, we had the IG program. And you know, even beyond these 30 students, there's direct benefits to some of the other students. For example, taking 22 students out of the fourth grades from each of the schools, that does lower the class sizes slightly by like one or two students per class for everybody across fourth grade. It's also something that makes our district stand out. So if people are, you know, choosing if they're going to, you know, live in Three Village or Smithtown or Portchup, you know, they'll go to the website, they see, look, there's, there's IG, and they have, you know, high hopes for their children, this is something that I think stands out for our district. This is also something that's, that's not really discussed is, you know, we had three grades of IG in this year, right? And one of those grades is going to be moving up, so we're not going to have sixth-grade IG next year. Fifth-grade IG is still occurring, but with this change, there's not going to be any new children in the IG program. And so, and I know fifth-grade IG, it's not, you know, it's not on the chopping block, that's the wrong way to say it, but it's, we've gone from three grades. If we don't restore IG, it'll be down to one grade with no new children, right? So it looks a little bit perilous, right? Like, it's, it's, it's something I'd be worried about that really, we haven't really made that discussion in public. We were saying we're cutting fourth-grade IG, but does this mean we're moving towards removing all of IG, right? And if that's the direction we're moving, then we should be clear about what we're doing. And I don't think we've, we've been saying that. Without IG, of course, the students would go back to their home schools, and then we asked the teachers to differentiate the instruction. So this means that, you know, you have different students with different abilities in the classroom, and the teacher can teach, you know, slightly different lessons and give slightly different assignments as a way to make sure everybody gets their needs met. So we do this already for, for example, if there's like special education students, we'll differentiate instruction for them, and they'll be provided support to do that, right? It's not like the teacher has to do everything by themselves. I mean, we're legally required to do that in certain cases, but it's also the right thing to do, right? For IG, there's no legal requirement to provide additional support, right? So we'll be asking them to differentiate, which is sort of like, you know, if like a chef has to cook five different meals at once, right? Like, something's going to get burnt, somebody's going to left, get left hungry, right? It's, it's, it's a lot of things we're asking of our teachers without providing additional support. We've heard from the letters and the speakers at the previous meetings as well that their, their children were bored in class up to time, right? So I'm sure the teachers were trying to differentiate, but we're asking a lot of the teachers as well, too. So having, you know, having a self-contained IG classroom does allow this, you know, reduces basically the burden on, on the teachers to do this differentiation process.
Before we move on, I was going to say, Dr. Scanlon, do you want to respond?
Certainly. So all very good points, Dr. Back. So the, one of the things, you know, I'm a strong proponent for servicing all the needs of all of our students in this district, which this district has committed to for many, many years. The IG program is a unique program. We're one of the few districts left that still has a self-contained program. You are correct that we're, while we don't have a fourth grade, it doesn't mean that the fifth grade wouldn't be able to be run the following year, because you could do the selection process for fourth grade going into fifth. So there, it's too hard to predict for what the budget for the following year may look like, but you know, it could be, you know, when we use the expression low-lying fruit, something for the board to consider if they wanted to eliminate. That's not the recommendation or the direction I would want to see us go in, but that, that certainly could be a possibility if things got hard again in a, in a budget season. For clarity purposes, the IG program right now services about 54 students over three grade levels. It could be between 20 to 25 students. At this late juncture, we're not sure if all of the parents would want their children leaving their home schools at this point in the year for next year, but it could be possible. We need to be cognizant of the fact that if it is a low number, what do we do then? Because I've heard said at this table about concern over a cost of per-pupil expenditure, this does increase the cost for per-pupil expenditure. If we have 22 students who are spending $200,000 and somewhat $1,000 on it, that expenditure increases. Whereas IG services a smaller number, the STEM program would service an entire grade level, we're talking over 400 students being addressed there, so every student would have a, a piece of that. So just possibilities to think about as you, as you're considering this discussion.
While we're on IG, I just had a question. So you spoke about this being one of very few IG programs. What have other districts gone to in lieu of that?
There, it varies from district to district. Some districts have eliminated entirely, and just as Dr. Back mentioned, they service it through enrichment opportunities directly in classes. Some have gone through what we have, have had in the past through the Pi program, which was in each of the schools. Pi is not a required certification area for gifted and talented. It doesn't require a special certification to do that. That, that's what some, and it stays in a school. A large expense for us for IG is transportation. You know, we're pulling from four buildings to one, so you know, the transportation budget does get impacted by that. And if one of our other goals for the future to look, to go back to look at is start time, that is a possibility to save money for elimination of program that costs money for a smaller portion of the population. The, there are some schools, remember if we are, if we have, there was suggested to do a Pi, do an IG program, a gifted program in each one of the buildings. Well, that would be an increase of about $500,000 just in staffing alone, not to mention you need five certified gifted teachers to do that. So that's a special certification. And is it, by doing that, is it one grade level? I would not suggest doing a multi-grade level IG program, because the curriculum in each of those grade levels is different. So that's, you know, but again, as I said, it varies in many different districts. A lot of good programs out there that we could go take a look at and see examples of. Little late in the year to do that right now, but certainly something we could consider for the future.
Hi, and could we just get some clarification, Dr. Scanlon, on that everybody that is invited to IG does not accept IG, and those students that do not accept IG are given differentiated work within their classroom and are very successful going through the high schools?
That, that is correct, yes. So it, again, varies from year to year. Back when I was in Dr. Biscari's position, it was sometimes a 60/40, 60% would accept, 40% would not. And it's based upon criteria that we use off the LSAT exams and the matrix that we use from that as we make the determination. There was a time in Three Village where we were running two sections per grade level, starting in third grade all the way through sixth grade with over 30 students in each section, but that was when we were a much larger school district. Quite difficult. One interesting statistic just to mention, as some folks feel that the IG program is a precursor for students going into some honors programs. The fact of the matter is, the vast majority of our students in honors and AP courses were never in IG. So about 75% of our students in honors and AP were never in IG. And, and that's a good thing, because as they, you know, as they go through, some students, the bigger factor for why they don't want to leave, comes to the program is they don't want to leave their home school, particularly those that are on a different schedule than NASTA CAG.
Anybody else? Dr. Lee?
I'd like to see something new for September. I'd like to see what we had in the past. I know we had the STEM program in all of our elementary schools, and I know the kids loved it. However, because of budget cuts, we had to eliminate it. But I'd like to see the idea of bringing it back to the fourth grade on a trial basis and seeing how it works for a year. I also would like to see the summer reading program restored. I think that's very beneficial for a lot of our kids, and a lot of our kids have a hard time reading, and would be excellent for them again to be able to, for, for us to afford this program with them.
Dr. Lee?
Okay. Just to support IG program, we have hear, heard very strong voice from parents, community about it, because we have done it so successfully. So, and now that we're giving up start time for the next year, I don't see a strong point of removing IG, so just to support it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, I just wanted to put my support towards the STEM program. STEM program was beloved by many families throughout the district, in every school for many years. It was very sad that we had to let it go during COVID, so I would love to see that brought back. I mean, I think it's a smart move financially to start it with one grade, like administrative, administration is requesting, and then we can build that over time, so we're not promising something we're going to be taking away in the future, so we can build that up. So I think that's a smart move. And I also believe that every child deserves enrichment, not just a few. Some people are gifted academically, some people are gifted in the arts, some people are gifted in other different areas. And if we can have the STEM or STEAM or whatever we're going to be calling it, you know, touch on a lot of these different aspects, I think it's going to improve the education of, of a lot more children. And I also agree with the summer reading program, because that's very beneficial to our kids.
Okay, Dr. Kerman, anything?
I agree with Karen, what Karen just said, is bringing back the STEM program is very, very good, and bringing it back in one, one grade level is very intelligent now, because that will help us move it up to the rest of the grade levels. And I also agree with the summer reading program, that it's something that's very, very beneficial to the kids who go there. So I'm much in favor of those.
And I'll just throw mine out there. I, I also would love to see STEM come back. I know that was a highlight of my kid's day. I think it's great, and it is for all of our students, so that would be excellent. I think summer reading, very essential and foundational, and I think saving the rest for the rainy day probably makes sense. So do we have enough consensus? Do we have four-ish people who are in favor of STEM? It sounds like we do. Yes? And for summer reading also? Okay, and then we're all good with saving the rest, putting it in the bank, as it were? Okay, so let's go, if you are in favor of restoring the STEM program, show of hands. One, two, three, four, five, okay. If you are in favor of restoring summer reading, show of hands. I think you've got, okay, five, and that would leave, unless anybody has...
We should talk about IG, too.
Okay, yes. And is there anybody, let's go, show of hands, anybody who would instead want to restore for $200,000 IG, that would probably change the rest of the equation. So we have one, two for restoring IG. Okay. So I think basically you have your, you have your consensus. Thank you. All right, so again, our amended agenda would take us now to item 7D, policies. This is the 2000 series, these are first reads, and we turn it over to Mr. Mistacki.
So this week, we met with the Policy Committee. The Policy Committee is, began in a very ambitious process of reviewing all of, all of the policies of the school district. We started with the 200 series. That consisted of 40, sorry, 39 policies. The policies have been reviewed by the Policy Committee and legal counsel. About a third of those policies were viewed and had no changes. They were legally sufficient as written. The remainder of them had minor changes to make sure they're in full compliance with the changes of the law, really more for, for wording of changes in statutes. Policy 24A has been eliminated from the district and consolidated into another policy that's for agenda preparation, so nothing has been taken out of it, it's just been moved into your policy 24. If there are any specific questions by the board on any of the individual policies, I'm available to, to answer those questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you so much. All right, so that brings us to eight public comments, and we have one. Rachel Nagle, if you would come to the microphone, please.
Hello, thank you for having me. My name is Rachel Nagle, I have two children at Mount. First, you all mentioned the Autism Awareness Month. I just wanted to thank you for bringing that to all buildings, it was incredibly impactful, especially the assembly. Both my boys were talking about that in my home, so thank you. Why I came to speak today, thank you for being so open and honest about all the programs and everything you've been working on. One thing that I did feel was maybe perhaps swept under the rug was the third-grade music... One thing that I did feel was maybe perhaps swept under the rug was the third grade music program perhaps not being brought back for next year. Forgive my voice, I'm like so nervous talking, but... So I just wanted to, not comment, but question, is it true that that is being cut for next year, third grade music in general? The ensembles?
I'll let Dr. Biscari discuss how it's being reconfigured.
So yes, it was discussed that there was going to be a reconfiguration of the program. So the way that we're looking at it now is that each of the grade levels have an additional prep period, and we were looking to have third grade have music next year as their additional prep. We already do have the instruments, and I've been in touch with Ms. Akner about our director of music on how we can deliver this differently rather than having the lesson pullouts and the staff that's required to do that, and the ensembles to do, to still teach some of the skills of, you know, music reading and playing. So we just started initial, our initial conversations about what that would look like in third grade if it was an extra period of music a week for each of those third grade classes.
Okay, because it read as music ensembles were being cut? So is it an extra period of music for third grade?
So it wouldn't be the large group like it is this year, right? Like, students get pulled out now for either orchestra or for band, right? For introductory, and they do have an ensemble as well. I don't know if we'd be able to do the ensemble, and we wouldn't be pulling the kids out for individual or small group lessons.
Okay.
But we're looking to structure it in a way that we still can teach some of the skills that were inside of that program, just kind of in a different configuration.
All right.
So generally during public participation, we don't take questions and answers?
I totally understand, because I was set up to believe that...
We'd be happy to have Dr. Biscari speak with you after the meeting.
That'd be great. If I could just comment then that reading music in third grade is so important, and the ensemble setup in the third grade is something that makes our district really ahead of every other district. So many music educators want to move here because of what we have in the third grade, like right after their decoding, right after their reading, they need to start reading their music because that potential is there in the third grade to be expanded upon. That's why our district is like the best for music. So like, if we keep those ensembles in the third grade, I really do think that is the best thing for them. So that is my comment. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, and we have one correspondence to be read aloud. This is from Shari Fontana. Esteemed Board of Ed trustees, I know this budget season has been a rough one. Due to the many financial hardships at the last Board of Ed meeting, you made a very difficult decision to take Start School Later out of the budget. Doing so has basically added money back into the working funds. I'm appealing to your sense of what is right for all of our students. I urge you to please reconsider the discontinuation of the fourth grade I G, which will probably roll over to the entire I G program the following year. Please keep in mind that this program services, quote, "special needs students of a different type," a student that does not have any laws to protect them, but they nonetheless need services. Although this program does not service the masses, that doesn't make this program any less important. High-ability learners need the opportunity to be challenged, just like all students. Please don't forget that while everyone keeps talking about declining enrollment, the I G program is actually a program that draws people to Three Village. Being a program that few if any districts have helps make Three Village stand out and be inviting. If you keep cutting programs that set us apart from other districts, what will make us shine? Why would people want to move to Three Village and pay the taxes we do? There are only a few things that set Three Village apart from other Long Island school districts, and the I G program is one of them. If for some reason you choose to move forward with the discontinuation of the I G program, I implore you to possibly think about adding back in a PI or SEM-like program, although not as good as I G, to still afford these students the challenge they need and fully deserve. I'm sure there are many parents like myself that are more than willing to help you come up with something. Thank you. And that concludes our public comment period. So that will bring us to our new item 9A, appeal regarding student identified in confidential Schedule A. Mr. Mistacki, anything to note on that?
No, that's the appeal that the board discussed in executive session, and it references the board's decision that was made.
Thank you. And so do we see a motion to approve that appeal? A second? All in favor? Any opposed? No abstentions? All right, so that carries. Thank you so much. That will bring us then to our consent agenda. Do I see a motion? A second? All right, and we begin with items B and C, Ms. Germano.
Those are just the minutes from the last two board meetings, the ninth and the 23rd.
Thank you. And beginning with item D, Mr. Carlson.
Thank you. Item D is the appointment of our fiscal advisor for our tax anticipation note, and item E is the appointment of the, our bond counsel also for the tax anticipation note. These are both firms that we've worked with in the past on all of our borrowing. And then item F is the authorization itself for our tax anticipation note for this coming up, which will be done this summer. Item G is some bid extensions for various services provided by vendors. These are all with the same terms and conditions as the current bid to extend them to next year. These are all companies we're very happy with. Item H is authorization to participate in cooperative bids and shared purchasing with a number of organizations and other school districts. This is for next year, gives us more opportunities for better pricing for various goods and services throughout the year. Item I is approval of a health and welfare services contract with the South Huntington School District for some Three Village resident students that attend private school located within the South Huntington School District. Item J is approval of a contract for an outside service provider for special education services in accordance with I E Ps. Item K is donations, we have one donation, it's a check for $1,350 from Mr. Nathan Jane, who is the coordinating chair for guidance at Ward Memorial High School, to go to the Ward Memorial High School Scholarship Fund. Item L is declaration of surplus equipment. We have some various furniture and equipment that is in, no longer usable from Jolinas, Ward Memorial High School, and also we have a safe with a lock that does not work anymore in my office, in the business office. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Any questions about any of those items? Okay, thank you. Beginning with item M, Dr. Biscari.
M is the approval and adoption of a new elementary math program. We finished the pilot process with three different programs, and the math committee came up with a consensus to adopt Eureka squared. Any questions about, you want...
I was going to say, you want to stop there? Anybody have any questions about the new math program? Was there something really unique about it that draw you to Eureka?
Well, I'd like to thank Dr. Rinaldi and the math committee because they did put in an enormous amount of hours comparing three different programs, three very different programs. Some of the things that were highlighted by the teachers were that the manipulative aspect of Eureka squared, the teachers shared that were piloting that students were excited about math again, which they were happy to see. They were also happy that it was a very, it's a plain-type textbook, it's not overstimulating. So our special education population, the teachers that piloted the program, were pleased that it really focused on the math aspect of, of the program. There was also a connection between home and school because math is taught differently now than it has been in the past. It's kind of a cheat sheet for parents at home to understand what their students are doing on homework so that they're able to help them rather than looking at it and saying that's not how I learned it. And over, and there was a fluency piece that focused on, in each lesson, there's a fluency piece that focuses on the automaticity of addition, subtraction, multiplication, division facts.
Excellent, thank you. Any specific questions about the math program? Nope? Okay, thank you so much. Do you want to continue with N?
Yes, this is just an update to the impartial hearing officers from the state. And O and P are just affiliation agreements for clinical placements at SUNY Oswego and at Delphi.
Thank you. Any questions about those? Q, recommendations of committee on special education subcommittee in five of four accommodation plan meetings as dated. And R, recommendations of the committee on preschool special education meetings as dated. And beginning with S, Dr. Dubrasky.
Yes, S, personnel items instructional. We have one instructional retirement in the area of teaching assistant. We have two instructional resignations. We have one leave of absence in the library media specialist. We have five instructional appointments, seven instructional substitute appointments, appointments of volunteer coaches, co-curricular stipends, several hour, hourly and daily extra assignments, as well as appointments to the summer enrichment and extended school year program for the summer of 2025. T, personnel items non-instructional. We have six non-instructional resignations, which include security guards and childcare assistants, substitute custodian, two non-instructional appointments, which include one guard and one custodian, two non-instructional changes in status, which is one clerical and one food service worker, several non-instructional substitute appointments, which involve custodians, food service workers, and substitute special education aides and monitors, several appointments for extra hourly assignments, which includes the clerical for the budget vote, and several appointments to the summer rec program and extended school year program for the non-instructional members.
Thank you. Any questions about any of those? Okay, thank you so much. All in favor of the items in our consent agenda? Any opposed? No abstentions? That carries, thank you. And that being done, do I see a motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor? No opposed, no abstentions, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, have a good night.